Correct.
Even though it says Monday?
Mm-hmm.
Good morning. This is Tuesday, May 12th, 2020. And we are, this is our first official live selectman's meeting. Even though it is closed to the public, we do have the availability on Zoom, which I'll, I'll read that information. But I guess I'd like first to ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. While the building is closed to the public, the meeting is being livestreamed at www.livestream.com/bellmontnh. Public access to the meeting can be found on Zoom. And please see the meeting agenda posted on www.bellmontnh.org for login information. Anyone having any difficulties joining the Zoom meeting should email to townadministrator@bellmontnh.org. Okay, we will officially start this meeting. We have minutes of a meeting that we held via Zoom on Monday, May 4th at 10 o'clock. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are social distancing, obviously. Going to do some stretching here. Okay, I believe we have signed all of the accounts payable, manifests, et cetera, et cetera. So we will start with new business, which is the coronavirus relief fund reimbursement, Jean.
Yes, and if I could just ask everyone who is viewing the meeting through Zoom, if you could just wave at me if, in fact, you can hear us. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure you could hear the board. Okay, so we received word last week that the governor's office for emergency relief and recovery was going to be extending $32 million to municipalities and cities across the state of New Hampshire, along with $8 million to counties, to cover eligible COVID-19-related expenses incurred from March 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2020. The town of Belmont, under this program, is eligible to receive reimbursement for related expenses up to approximately $173,771. These funds are separate funds. They are not associated with the FEMA funds. And so that anything that is being submitted under FEMA through the fire department would not be submitted under this program. So what we'll be looking at for our first submittal, which is for the period March 1st to April 30th, would be any improvements that we've had to do to allow for remote meeting access, software updates, care for the homeless. So Donna had several individuals whom she had to place in a hotel. Those costs we're going to be submitting under this program. We're also going to be submitting our legal bills that we've incurred during this time period that related to the COVID-19 issue. So that would be our first submittal. So we're looking at a submittal of approximately $8,000 that will be reimbursed to the town under this initial application. Our next application will go in on July 15th, which would cover the period May 1st to June 30th. And then on September 15th, which would cover costs incurred from July 1st to August 31st. Some of the things that we've been talking about doing under this program are improvements to the building to ensure that the building is safe once it's reopened to the public. Steve met with Cynthia last week, and we had a representative from Granite State Glass come in. And we're going to be changing out that front window where Cynthia's office is. So it will no longer have a sliding window. It will actually be a solid window with a frame with-
An opening at the bottom?
Cutouts at the bottom. There'll be two cutouts at the bottom for access, for people to put things in and out. We're also looking at purchasing acrylic sneeze guards for any of the offices where people would come in. So for example, when the treasurer comes into Denise's office, she would normally sit at the desk chair across from Denise and have a conversation. We'll have portable sneeze guards, something that can go away hopefully when this is all over. But we're looking at that type of thing. We'll also be getting one for the door in Cynthia's office so that when she has that door open, there's actually a protection in case she chooses to deal with a customer at that, at that location. We're also assisting with the library and getting the sneeze guard protections for their building as well.
Yeah, I see they're having a meeting tomorrow, I think.
Yes.
And what about land use?
And land use as well. So this would encompass land use, Alicia's office primarily-
I was just gonna say, what about Alicia?
Because people do come in and sit down in front of her as well. My office, we're still debating. It's very likely that I'll probably get one for the front of it at least so that if anyone is sitting across from me, it covers it. If any of the other departments are interested in getting them as well, you know, that will be something that we can do under this grant that, or not grant, but this reimbursement. So we'll have to expend the funds, but we'll get reimbursed on our next submittal for this type of thing. So those are just some of the things that we've, you know, been talking about initially. Also, in addition to that, which is actually the next item on your agenda, which is the-
CARE Act.
Agreement to participate in the stipend program, which is the program that the governor announced last week, whereas first responders are eligible for stipends in the amount of $300 for full-timers and $150 for part-timers. We've gone through and prepared our lists and submitted those to the state. The total funds to be expended under that program are $74,157.06. That is the amount of funds that would be reimbursed to the town by the state under the stipend program. The taxes that we are going to have to pay under this program, we would be submitting under the relief fund.
All right, that's what I was just gonna ask. Because we're responsible, the taxpayers, even though the governor has given everyone this stipend, the taxpayers are responsible for covering the taxes.
Correct.
So now what you're saying is you can take the taxes and submit it under the relief fund? All right. We have to upfront this, obviously, for a month at a time?
There are different means of payment. In talking with Denise, we recommend that the board pay this weekly. It better be paid weekly.
Yes.
There's less upfront cash impact. And it's for a period of 8.28 weeks. And we would pay it for that, you know, each week for that period of time. She's going to do a separate payroll. As a matter of fact, well, I had a schedule, but you did sign that separate payroll for this coming week.
Yep.
We just felt that it was the best way to process it. That way they're completely-
Well, the other problem is not that, not that I don't suspect anybody's going to leave, but if we pay them upfront and then three weeks from now somebody gets done, that money's owed back to us.
Correct.
And we all know that that's why we're trying to collect that kind of-
Right, and then owed back to the state of New Hampshire as well. The other thing is, anyone who is eligible for the stipend must be eligible to respond to work. So if someone were on vacation, they are not eligible to respond, so they would not be eligible for the stipend.
Okay.
And we would have to reimburse the state of New Hampshire for those.
So if somebody is scheduled to take a two-week vacation next outing next week, they would not receive that for the two weeks they're on vacation?
Correct.
Okay.
So that would be the initial funds that I'm asking you to accept under the RSA 21-P:43, which is a method allowing us to accept the CARE Fund or CARE Act funds. Did not require a public hearing. Only requires that the board of selectmen accept those funds at their meeting. And that's what I'm asking you today to do for those, those fees. We're also asking you just to acknowledge that we did receive from the HHS stimulus program an amount of $9,589.73. This money was deposited into the ambulance revenue fund because the town has an account with HHS. So it went directly into that fund instead of going into the general fund. It is to be used to cover, our intent is to use it to cover uninsured individuals or the balance of any insured claim rather than balance billing the patient that had a COVID-related diagnosis. The fire department has set up a log. They're keeping track of all of this. They'll provide that information to us in the fall once we've, you know, completed that program. But those funds have already been received, so you need to accept those as well.
And must be a return policy if we don't use them?
You can use them for any COVID-related expense.
Having watched enough of those blue banners on TV, we seem to be in that one-to-four group. So we haven't had a lot of, I don't think we've had a lot of ambulance-related. Maybe we have, and I'm just not aware of it.
Well, and I think, I think the way it works, and I certainly, Mike, if he wanted to chime in, let me just unmute him. The, basically, it's, it's not necessarily a diagnosis by the ambulance provider, but it could be a diagnosis that is determined-
It could be, in other words.
At the hospital. It could be some related matter, correct, Mike?
From what we're told, if they say they have it, doesn't mean they have it. It has to be a proven diagnosis, and it will come from the hospital who will end up calling us, and we will end up letting our billing company know. But that's the only way you can do it. Because you can't just say you have it.
That's not answering my question.
It would actually be a proven diagnosis that has, that would make that decision.
We do not have to return the funds to the program. We can use it for other COVID-related expenses. But our initial response was to use it for this purpose first.
But my, now my second question, because you just didn't open the door for the first one. So we'll say at September, this program ends. And let's say we've got $7,000 of this money that we haven't used.
Correct.
And it's in that ambulance fund. And we've incurred an expense related to it in one of our buildings. How do we legally take the money out of the ambulance fund, which is pretty much protected money when it goes in, to be only used for the fire department?
So the money should not have gone into the ambulance fund. In speaking with our, our legal counsel, because we were planning to use it for uninsured expenditures by a patient or for balance billing type issues, we are leaving it in the ambulance fund until we do a final reconciliation of that in September or October. Then we will transfer the monies legally with no, there's no concerns or problems.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna question our fund because we tried to use that money to help that man's department, and we couldn't.
But it was not meant to be in the ambulance fund, John. It should have come to the general fund. Unfortunately, because the fire department has a-
Separate fund.
An account with Health and Human Services. It, that was the only electronic fund transfer number they had. So they transferred the money into that account. We could move it now, but Laura's-
I don't have a place where they put it, but I know that over the years, we looked at that ambulance fund to try to help the police department because they work hand in hand, and we couldn't.
No, you're absolutely right. So what we will do is move the money into the general fund in the fall. And then-
So in other words, if, if there's $7,000 in there, let's just say, and the, the police department had some expenses to COVID or, no?
I believe it has to be directly related to the fire department, is my understanding, you know, ambulance-type-related expenses. Because it actually is coming from the Medicare fund is where it's actually coming from.
So when this program ends, and it's gonna end at some point, whatever monies we have in there, we will legally be able to pull out off this initial-
Out of the ambulance fund.
And put it into the general fund.
Into the general fund. But it can only be expended at that time for legally, legal expenditures related to the COVID in accordance with the HHS guidelines. So we'll give you that entire list of guidelines for that.
Okay.
They're making this much more complicated than it has to be.
Yeah. I, I have, yeah. Yeah. All right. There's always "and." And here's my question. No different than this $300 stipend that the first responders are receiving, I'm gonna take exception to that because as far as I'm concerned, where's, where's Donna in this? She's out there dealing with homeless people who we know have been a high priority. Why isn't she receiving this? I have a little issue with how that's being done, obviously, just personally. I just think that they could have done a little bit better job at how they're expending those funds. And we're not going to have to pay that back? That's the million-dollar question. All this money that's coming, we're not gonna get a bill in a year saying, gee, because it's expended? Okay, that's my only question. I just don't want-
Well, we're gonna pay, but it won't be your town.
Well, I know. We're all gonna pay.
It will be your federal taxes that will pay.
Pay. I just don't want a year from now that we get hit with this big bill that we're gonna have to put forth to the taxpayers to pay for this. That's what I'm concerned about. So, all right. What else do we have for new business?
So I do need you to accept-
Oh, that's right. You need, yeah.
Two funds under RSA 21-P:43. So just a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept the CARE Act funds under the RSA that Jean just mentioned. And the two amounts are $74,157.06. And the second amount is $9,589.73.
Do you wanna second that, Sonny?
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Joey Rolfe had reached out to the town a couple of weeks ago regarding posters for the senior class that they were having made. They should be putting them out today along Mill Street. We did have the area mowed and taken care of last week so that it would be freshly mowed and taken care of so that they could put those posters out. She had originally thought they would put them out over the weekend, but they didn't have, they were raining.
Probably just as well with the wind.
With the weather. So their plan was to do it this afternoon. So those will be out. And they will take care of picking them up and so forth. Probably, I'm guessing, about two weeks.
And the police department will provide a little bit extra drive-through Mill Street for the next couple of weeks because obviously with the things we've already had go on, it would be, you know, much appreciated. All right. Okay. We shall. Any other new business, Jean?
Nope.
All right. We'll go on to old business. The town's ongoing COVID-19 guidelines and reopening plans.
Yes, so I had briefly mentioned that we are looking to purchase the sneeze guards and so forth for the various offices to get things up and ready when, when and if, and so forth, when you're ready to open. So we will be getting those installed and taking care of that. I am picking up the masks that we're getting from the state under the free mask program tomorrow afternoon at the DMV in Concord. And I've been told that they recommend that each week you go on and actually put in another application for another batch. And they'll email you the day before they're ready to be picked up and let you know that they're ready, and you can go and pick them up. So I'm supposed to drive in at between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, and they'll come out, and they'll load them in the back of my car, and I'll bring them home. So, so that was. And then the only other remaining thing under old business was the list of questions that you were going to put together regarding, you had for Superintendent Tursi for the next meeting, which is the 18th of May.
Yes.
So if you wanna be thinking about those questions so that I can let him know what those might be.
Yeah.
And as far as talking about potentially reopening, I'm pleased to, to let you know that on Friday, Cynthia had deposited approximately $10,000 in property tax money. Yesterday, the girls deposited approximately $8,000 in property tax money. And this morning, online, we had $16,000 more paid in property taxes. So, and the bills just basically hit the mailboxes on Saturday.
Saturday, I think it was.
So we've received about $34,000.
No, not Saturday. Oh, I got mine yesterday. I got mine yesterday.
Yeah, technically Saturday. So we've received about $34,000 at this point in tax money has already come through. Our current balance this morning is $1,928,000, and that's after paying one half of the school payment. So we did, we did send that out last week for the month of April, so.
I mean, obviously, I've noticed on Facebook there's been some very positive comments, and people understand what we're doing. All right? And, and you're always going to have one or two that you're not gonna make happy. That's, we all know that you can't please everyone. But I think, we all know, it's an inconvenience. We're trying our best, but we also, I think it's very important that everyone understand that we've gotta look out for our employees also. You know, as we hope that everyone that's working, that their, their employer is looking out for their best interests also. And we're just kind of at this point. I think, taking it one day at a time. We haven't made that decision, that final decision, when or if we're, when we're going to open. I, I'm sure that that will be coming. I know that, obviously, we did make the decision not to have a summer park and rec program. And I would say, by what I'm reading and seeing that's closing, that there are already, you know, amusement and beaches and whatever that are, that are not taking the chance and that are closing for the summer. I feel that that was a, that was an unfor, you know, it wasn't an easy decision for us, but it was, we needed to make it so that people at least had a chance to be able to make arrangements for sitters if people are going back to work by then. But, but I will say that I think everyone, I'll say 95% of everyone understands what we're dealing with and why we made the decisions we made. I know I went by town hall one day last week, and one of the girls was out front with her mask and her gloves, was someone was in their car. And, and I understand that there are certain things that people need to drive up to. But I think all in all, I think it's going smoothly, unless you guys have heard something different.
I'd rather not say.
Oh, all right.
Reality hurts people sometimes when I don't- There's a lot of reality that we're kind of missing. And I've got a topic concerning our town hall that I'd like to say in front of the public.
All right.
And it has nothing to do with COVID. I would like to ask the board to direct Jean to write a letter to the U.S. Postal Administrator for Northern New England. Our post office in Belmont, if it's not the worst in the nation, it's the second worst. We had a gentleman last week who I know. He's pretty popular around. He takes a lot of pictures. Takes pictures for the newspaper, takes pictures for us. And he went in to register his car. And he wasn't quite aware of it. He's gonna get it back in the mail. So he started pounding on Cynthia about it, and she explained, this is the way it's gotta go. Well, can't I just come in the office and get the stickers? No, you can't. Well, she mailed them out directly because he does do a lot for the town. And he said, well, I gotta, look, he waited till the end of the month, like people were thinking that we were gonna open.
Yeah, yeah.
And his stickers didn't come, his stickers didn't come. He called Concord because he's an ex-police official. He's been around with police departments and sheriff's departments. They sent his letter to Arizona that was going to the state of New Hampshire. It was postmarked from Arizona. We've sent out tax bills. The tax bills came back to us. And these were tax bills where people had issues with taxes. And they were sent $6.01 a piece. Were sent out with return receipt requested. They never left the Belmont Post Office. And they put them in our return mail. This has gotta stop. And if we don't complain, now, I know the gentleman, he's, he called over to Maine, and he took, he's on Facebook. He took a picture of the envelope when he finally got his stickers in the mail to show. And he's got that. And he lives right here in town. He's a nice man. Does a lot of community service. And it had nothing to do with it. Whatever they're doing down here, they've got a real problem. A genuine problem. Enough of a problem that my mailbox got hit two weeks ago at my house. And I have a P.O. box down here that I get my mail. The mail that was ending up in my mailbox was Mr. Corvus, who's down the street. Every day I got mail. You realize they're gonna stuff it with the advertising stuff. So when it got run over, I, I took it right, I didn't replace it. I don't know where Mr. Corvus' mail's going now, but he's got a-
Oh, my goodness.
He's got a mailbox, but we got his mail.
Wow.
It, it, it's an amazing phenomenon what's happened with that office. It is absolutely not a good representative. And I mean it. It's a problem. And when you have stuff like that happen, once, once in a while, you can understand it. But with the rapidity that we're going through right now, when you get, you send out 38 envelopes, and you get 18 back that never left the post office, not one, they come back. So you're gonna spend another $6.01 to redo this thing. And they didn't leave that post office because it never had a stamp. It didn't go to Manchester. All the mail goes to Manchester. Never went, they never went. They stayed, she knows. But I'd like to have, look up who you gotta, you gotta ring somebody's bell.
You can do that.
Because if it's time-dated, we just threw the time date right out the window.
Yeah, especially with the certified mail.
And certified mail, we just threw it right out the window. Looks like we didn't do our job, but we did. And they laugh about it. When her girl went down there and saw those, said, what's this? They were, well, don't worry about it. You just redo them, send them again. Well, that's not the, that's not, they were all done on the day they're supposed to, and it should have gone. So I think that we need a little help, a little horsepower.
Okay. So you'll do?
Yeah, I'll do the letter.
Awesome.
All right. I think we looked the address up and sent one other letter.
I think we did once, I think we did.
When you were having issues with mail getting delivered.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Not, not just returned, but delivered.
Yeah. And I would send it whomever. I'd send a certified mail with a return receipt just for the principle of the thing.
Well, if you had to call anybody, you know who the gentleman I was talking about?
Yes, I do too. Cynthia and I discussed it.
Well, then I, what I would do is maybe call him because he did go call, I guess their head office is now in Maine or someplace, Portland. And he made a call, or we could follow up on that with a letter because he said, this is ridiculous.
Yeah. All right. Next order of business is the police station construction management RFQs.
Yes. So you each had your set of hard copies-
Yep.
For your reading pleasure, as did the chief. There were approximately, I think there were 11 of them total from several different, very qualified firms across the state of New Hampshire. One of them having an office outside of this area as well as in New Hampshire. So what we're looking for, what we were hoping to do today was narrow that down to whatever you felt was a reasonable number that you would like to move forward with interviews for. I know that you had potentially talked about wanting to do the interview preferably in person rather than through a Zoom situation. Obviously, you would need to ask the company Obviously, you would need to ask the company if they were comfortable with that. And would they only be bringing perhaps one representative, possibly two? We could then, you know, Zoom the, the meeting itself, but yeah.
I, I have some questions.
Sure.
That I need your guidance and maybe Ruth's guidance on this because I'm confused. I wasn't real pleased with the company that drew up the existing drawings. I think the, that board did a good job, but I wasn't, especially at their last meeting that we had with them. They were come see, come sah, there was no, I, I wasn't at all pleased with their representative. So realizing those are not architectural drawings. So when, how can we? Or I, because I'm the one that's asking probably a stupid question, how can we pick a company without having an architect pick first? Because how could they bid on something without an architectural plan?
Well, typically what the construction management firm would do once you've chosen them is they would work with the architect to finalize the plans.
But we don't have one.
Well, and if you recall at your meeting back in March, following the town meeting, my comment was that I recommended that you not try to reinvent and go out and look for another architect. We've had several of the, the individuals who have submitted the RFQs did indicate that they've had a past working experience with La Valley. They were pleased with them. They didn't seem to have any negative comments. Now, I did not tell them that they were chosen as the architect. And any of them that referred to La Valley as the architect in the documents was their own assumption.
Their own assumption.
But we've been very clear with everyone that, you know, we don't, we have not finalized or firmed up that relationship. Um, I believe both, Mark and I both thought that that really was the wisest choice going forward than, rather than to try and go out and seek another architect at this point.
The other thing will be, that will be part of your interview process too. We'll be asking them, you know, um, I don't, I don't know if any of these have an in-house architect.
Well, I made a phone call because I had a question. I, one of the companies that I thought I would like to see do this, I saw on a couple of their referrals that a man who was a resident of this town was the architect. And, and another man in that company who's the superintendent lives right there, in that house. So I called Barry Salter and asked him, or Barry, his name is actually, and asked him, I said, I saw that you, they listed you as the architect for, one of them was the library in Plymouth, I believe they did some work up there. And I said, so did you, well, he said, that's really not true. He said, there, there, I did assist in the, some of the architectural design, but we didn't really have an architect on that. They had some plans and it was pretty easy to go by. Because, so I, my name shouldn't have been there because I am not an architect.
Okay.
And I did call him and ask because I said, I, I was good. I said, why, if we, if this company's got an onsite architect, why are we going over here to do this? And that's what he.
And those are the kind of things that will have to work out. But I think basically what we're trying to do is find a construction management company at this point. And those are things when we do our questions, alright, as we normally do, we prepare a list of questions when we're doing an interview. Those are the kind of things that you're gonna ask and, and feel out. That would be my two cents worth on it.
I mean, to go back out at this point and try and.
Well, I'm gonna say, maybe their architect's the greatest guy in the world, but I'm telling you from the representation of those people that put on the program. He was so nonchalant, it looked like we were at a tennis match and he was just calling the ball going back and forth.
Well, um, I'll, I'll bring this up, John, alright? When we did the work, well, Sonny wasn't, when we did the work on the mill, alright? I probably, I was not impressed with the architect, alright? That, that, that particular architect didn't do anything for me at all. Nothing personal. It was just, you know, so it, it's kind of, it all boils down to, alright? First off, money, alright? And obviously, the companies that we interview, are, are they going to be able to work with whomever we choose, alright?
So they, so let me just get the ground rules right. So when we pick this management company, they will in turn hire, sign on to the architect?
They will work closely with the architect. They will be basically, they will, they will move the project along and, and, you know.
And oversee. We're not going to have to deal with him.
We, we, we pay, we pay the.
Construction management company.
Company A and company A pays the architect.
No, we will have to pay for the final set of plans for the architect. And then the construction management firm will take over, get the bidding documents together and so forth and, and get.
Now, you answered my, my real question. How do, how do they get to a number?
Right. And, and it is.
So if we, when we do this, so we really, if we're going to stay with the firm that did the drawings, we give them the, we get a bid from them to do.
You need to get a price. Yeah.
And, and it doesn't mean, and it doesn't, and it doesn't mean that we can't get a bid from someone else either. And that we may, it may, through this process, we may have other people that want to, correct? Or do you leave that to this?
I, at this point, I think to have an, have an architect.
Right, it's recreating the wheel.
And start all over again.
It is. Well, I agree with that.
Push the project out.
Yeah, huge.
Well, I don't want to push it out financially. I mean, we're pushing out.
Yeah, and that, that would be the risk as well. So. But I do think that, and I've not done this because I was waiting for you to have an opportunity to meet and really talk about this, was whether or not you wanted me to reach back out to La Valley and actually get them to give us a proposal to finalize the architectural drawings for the building.
I think we should because the other, John, they know the site. They, they've met with the chief. They know what he's looking for.
I'm not so sure he does, and that's my problem. They, I mean, I've listened to the conversations that they didn't have.
Yeah.
And they really didn't. I can rip my teeth all I want. They didn't, did not take into respect a, a bunch of stuff. And you know that now.
And there would have to be more, obviously, there would be more conversation with an architect moving forward with an actual planning.
Right. And that's the problem is that, that, right.
Well, I would think so because I just, uh, I just don't have, I didn't have a wrong company feeling that they did their homework well for the town.
And I think maybe, maybe this, this is my two cents with, maybe we're a little premature with asking them to, well, we, I guess they can give us a quote, but I think that we're going to rely on our construction management company to work with the chief as well as the architect.
Correct. But what you're looking at is you really would want a final set of plans that the construction management team can work with.
Or look, or look at and say, this doesn't work.
Exactly, exactly. Right now, what all you have are what they're calling schematic renderings.
Renderings, yeah, renderings.
And, and they're not in a fashion that really would want them to use for that purpose. So you really need to get those final plans in the works so that you can have something to provide to the construction management firm that you choose.
So if we, if we ask you to call them and give us a quote for the architectural design of this building, do we again pay through the nose? And when I say that, I mean, I know we got to pay for the plans. You've got to pay for them. But we did, we paid quite a bit of money for basically a drawing.
Well, I think, and the other thing is, is that before I were, were to agree on anything with these people is I want a solid contract with them. We're not going to get hit with, well, gee, if you want this, you got to pay another seven thousand. Alright? We are going to have, I don't care if it takes, if they're thinking in their mind it takes thirty hours and it takes a hundred hours, it's going to be the same price. I want a firm not to change, no, no.
Add-ons.
No add-ons, no whatever. It's going to be, no matter what it is that has to do with those drawings. It will be, because we all know that they're going to come through with a set of drawings that then our construction management and Mark are going to sit with them. There's going to be changes. And we all, at least, it's always been my experience. There's going to be changes right up to the bitter end. And when the project is completed, I want them to provide us with a totally complete up-to-date set of drawings on that building. Alright? So if some door got changed, when they give us that final set, it better show the door being changed or the, the water line being changed or whatever. We want a complete.
You want, you want as-built.
As-built, totally complete. And that's part of whatever the contract is. Okay, alright.
I think that you have to, hopefully, can run getting the pricing from the architect for that final piece in conjunction with and on the same timeline as choosing a construction management firm so that when you've chosen a firm, they're ready to go.
Yep, yep, okay. So I guess the question is, um, who did you choose, John? I, I guess we've got to come up with a list of who we want to interview. Well, okay, forget about that, John. I don't want to talk about that. No, no, mine, no, mine. Sonny, who would you like to interview? We're not going to ask John to pass.
As far as I'm concerned, they're all qualified to do the job.
Well, they, oh, yes, that's for sure.
And, and I still think that they've got to look at the architectural drawings before I want to, because I want to see a bid on a job. I mean, I don't want to just take a guess at, say, this guy is going to do the job, yet he comes in at half a million dollars over the next person. I'd, I'd really like to talk to them after they've looked at the architectural drawings and give a bid.
But typically what happens with the construction management program is you, what we did is we went out and got qualifications. So we looked at every one of the, the individual firms that did construction management to see what they had done for past projects and so forth. Once you've chosen a firm, then you sit down and you negotiate what their fee is for doing the project. And then they put together the price for the building and all of the.
Everything.
Stuff that goes into it.
I still think the bidding is, is a big essential here. I mean, I mean, you could pick Bonnet Page and Stone, but yet they may come in at a higher bid than this other guy. So how do you, uh, uh, there's eleven of them to choose from. And I've looked at them all and I, I, I picked out two that I thought would be essential. And that's Bonnet Page and Stone and Hutter. They both have good qualifications and, but yet still it comes into a bidding war as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I think you have to meet with them first and, and really talk with them about what their, their concept is. And then how they put together their, their price. How, how do they structure their construction management contract? How do they then, you know, go out and get you costs for all of the items that go into the actual bid for the building itself? We did this with the mill building. When we did the mill building, we had actually met with several firms, construction management firms. We did ask them, and at that time, they actually went out and got the full team. So they had included, each one of them had included an architect on their team that we then chose a firm and then negotiated with them for the price for the plans and so forth that they looked at for the mill.
Your, your construction management company is going to go out and get bids for HVAC, roofing, you know, site work. They're going to be getting bids. They're going to be getting the bids, alright? We're hiring someone to oversee getting the bids and, 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 you know, and we can be part of that, I would assume. I mean, they, we can be part of deciding, is it going to be, um, I don't know, give me three, four site work guys and which one is the better price, you know, or three, four HVAC or three, four room, whatever, okay? So you're going to be bidding the, the job, but you're not going to be bidding, I don't want to say you're going to be bidding on a whole. You're going to be bidding on the individual parts of that job that have to be put out to bid for price-wise, correct?
So in other words, we should, we should choose more than just two organizations to interview. We should go like four. I mean, so you get a wider spread?
I have four. I came up with four.
So, I mean, well, that's my opinion.
Stephen did just comment to me that, you know, what we have right now is a schematic design.
Right.
The next set is a preliminary design set of documents or preliminary plan. That's actually a plan that then becomes the drawing that will become, will go out for people to bid on and so forth. So that's how the, that's how those plans work.
So, did you choose two?
I did, but I.
You chose Hutter?
Hutter and Bonnet Page.
BPNS. John, who did you choose?
BPNS and CCI.
Okay. I chose Hutter. I chose Ekman. BPNS. And North Branch Construction. Mark, who did you choose?
My first was BPS. Then I looked at Hutter and North Branch.
Well, we're all kind of in the same ballpark.
You know what? Main, main reason with BPS? That of the four people they showed in their management staff, two of them, the vice president and the superintendent, live right here in town. Yeah, and I just, I think that might be a little more personal.
Well, the reason I put them first is because two of them live here.
Right, that's what he said.
And they're putting their signature on this.
That's exactly right. That man.
Their, their reputation and their, you know, their status.
Yep.
Is here and I think the buying is.
I think.
That's the, that's the only reason why I put them.
I, I, I think you're right. And I looked at, you know, I.
Well, I think that the other thing is, is, you know, with, obviously, everything going on in the world, and it is in the world right now, is that, um, you know, you tend to stay more local, I guess, and it's, you know.
Well, they built stuff, you know, they built the high school. Other than, it wasn't their fault it got flooded, but I mean.
Well, that was years later, but yeah.
Again, I, I have to agree with Sonny on some point too, is where the money comes in.
That's exactly right. The money's huge.
You have this person and these people that are very, you know, built into the community and it's a community-based project. But if they're going to be, you know, a quarter of a million dollars more than someone else that's going to give you the same product, you've got to weigh that relationship a little bit too, you know?
I mean, I don't know.
A types of supervisor across the street.
Right.
Is a benefit.
Right.
He's got to look at it every day.
Yeah.
He's got a real, you know, Salter lives up off Brown Hill.
So I guess the other question is, is that, um, I personally, and I don't mind doing Zoom. I, I've been, I'm getting really good at it lately. Okay, I've been doing a lot of things, alright? But I guess this to me is just huge. And I think that I would prefer that be sitting across from someone.
Oh, I couldn't agree more.
You know, and I think, again, we can do Zoom. We can have the five of us here so that obviously if someone wants to bring a couple with them, that we could safely still meet our social distance and maybe not feel, you know, that we're, you know, going to get breathed on or whatever. But, but that's my personal feeling. I think that.
Is there a limit to how many people can be in, say, some areas?
Yeah.
You can't have any more than ten.
More, more than ten, yeah.
But you could have them, you could stage them.
Well, that's it. You could do like most people do and bring one, one.
Oh, no, you'd only bring one con, oh, no.
We do them at separate times. Right.
Yes. No, we would do them at separate times, that's for sure. Yeah. And, and it's just the fact that, um, you know, I, I just, I sometimes have to go a lot on my gut feeling when I'm talking with people and sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not, so.
I, I think you're, you proved that the night of the planning meeting when the people from Pike's were here.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
She got up and spoke and they started backing up.
Yeah, sorry.
No, you, you were right.
Yes.
You were right in doing that.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a major issue coming to this town.
Yes.
You were right in doing that.
Yeah. So I guess, um, however.
Well, there seems to be a, a majority. Bonnet Page and Stone, Hutter and North Branch seem to be the three that rose.
And it doesn't mean that when we're done those three, that we can't sit here and say, hmm, maybe we should get a couple more. I mean, I don't know how many you want to sit through. I think, you know. I think, you know, that would be my two, I think if we started with the three that we all kind of brought up, one or two of the whatever, and sat with those three, and then if we decide we wanna do three more, we'll do that, all right? We're not outruling anyone else, those are the, if that's fine with you guys.
It's fine with me. No need, no need interviewing more than we need to.
Right.
We're just to confuse ourselves.
Yeah, really.
I'm somewhat confused already.
You know.
When would you like to do this? When would you like to...
Tomorrow morning at 6:50.
Well, I guess...
Turn me on, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Me and I'll reach out to them this afternoon and try to make arrangements. I would imagine that they'll be fairly flexible. I'm thinking probably next week would probably be...
Well, we're gonna have a meeting anyway on Monday.
You do have a meeting on Monday, yes.
So what's, not, not that next week isn't bad, but do it another day, not after that meeting.
Yeah, not the same, right, don't make that one day.
Yep.
Right, I agree, yeah, okay.
What time is our meeting scheduled for Monday next week?
10:00 AM.
It is 10:00, okay, just so I know.
And Carmen Lorenz, who is with the Lakes Region Community Developers, is going to be coming in to give you, or coming through Zoom, where I did ask her if she would like, if she would prefer to come in and speak to you in person, so that we could really talk to her, to talk to you about the Gale School, and just to kind of give you an overview of what the eventual plans are for the ownership of that building, which would be through Lakes Region Community Developers. They will become the owner of that building, and what their plans are for the building and so forth. You then have a public hearing at 10:30. They have asked for a planning grant through CDBG, and we, because we are the entity, we have to hold the public hearing in order for that to go forward. The amount of the grant is 25,000. It's very similar to all the grants that we've done, very similar to what we did for Westview and Solar Village and so forth. But Carmen did want an opportunity to really come in and give you an overview of the project, so you knew what the plan was, and that it wasn't just gonna be moved and left, it was gonna be moved, and it does have a purpose and so forth, so... But we could then do the other, the interviews, perhaps...
Well, that, that would depend on them, kinda, 'cause if you set them on an obligation...
Yeah, find out what they're capable of.
Yeah, this lets us go wing, wing, I mean, you know.
Okay.
I know, I think Wednesday next week is, I have a couple obligations, I think, but, I mean, typically, I haven't had much for obligations, but I think it's just Wednesday.
I think we oughta move forward with this as soon as possible.
We don't want, I think we need to move forward, because I guess...
Because, you know, Tilton, I guess, has already broke ground, huh?
Oh, Tilton.
Yeah, they already broke ground, yeah.
Yeah, I see.
Tilton had a final architect, they had a final plan.
They did.
They had a final plan, they were ready to go.
They've been at it for five years.
Yeah.
They were ready to go with their final plan.
Yeah, um, was I just gonna add? It's gone.
And we gotta, we gotta put in the effect, too, of the mill, we gotta start working on that, because there's gonna be some changes, this is gonna be tore down, so Donna's gonna have to be moved.
Right.
We're gonna have to make a meeting place.
Steve and I had actually gone over and looked at the area that he had proposed for Donna, and we just need to bring her over and finalize the concept in what was Dr. O'Brien's office area. There's a perfect corner that has the proper access and so forth.
You don't, you don't think she'll be downstairs?
No, she, no, Steve, in Steve's plan, she's up on the...
Third floor.
Third floor, and I don't agree with that, but...
Town Hall's gonna up, isn't it?
I am.
No, no, the selectmen's office is gonna be on the third, I'm not just looking it up. Town clerk's office is gonna be on the third floor, isn't it?
Yep, yeah. Well, the intent was the second floor would remain with the senior center and Parks and Rec. First floor was gonna be potentially land use with the plan that Steve had drawn up that you had looked at, that you liked.
I think we should look at that plan again.
Yeah, we should, we have a copy of that somewhere?
We do, yeah.
I'd like to look at that, and I'd like Donna's input at that time, too.
Okay.
Cause there's some discrepancy about, there's some discrepancy about her being upstairs. She really, from what I understood, she didn't wanna be up there. She wanted to be down on the first floor, and John and I went and looked at that place on the first floor, and I thought that would be an ideal spot.
Well, wherever she's going to be, she's gonna have to share the space. It's not gonna be, you have to, you have to...
I understand it, but she could share that corner with minor work that, whoever else is on the first floor, they'd never see it, because they have a way in and a way out that doesn't involve the elevator. It's easily accessible, the interior walls is all you're talking about. It's like she's in now, to be quite frank with you, it's walled off, and I don't think that would, if that's agreeable to her. It's her workplace, and she, privacy seemed to be very important to her.
But, and not, and I don't mean any disrespect to Donna, but I think what you also have to think about is that this posi, you have to think about the position in general, and how going forward, the next person that we hire as a general assistance director may not have the same concerns.
And that's fine, Gene, you get to stop and think about it, okay? You know, it's, it's a case where, that if the next person prefers to be up on the third floor in amongst people, that's not a big deal. Whatever, we can move things around, all right? Walls, walls in that building can easily be taken down or changed or whatever, but bring the plan, I think the thing to do is, or, well, yeah, bring, if Donna's available the next meeting, next Monday, have Donna come, bring the plan, and we'll hash it out and figure it out, and whether she's on the first floor, the third floor, on the roof.
In order to move forward with the meeting space upstairs, we do have to bring Janet back in. Janet is going to have to come in and work probably for a week or two to determine all of the items in that upstairs storage that belong to Parks and Rec. Need to be sorted through and then officially moved to the second floor and so forth. That is not something, I don't think it's reasonable to ask Dan and Patrick to do that...
To make a decision, yeah.
When you don't know what she feels comfortable keeping and so forth. So I think we just need to...
And you're moving it to the second floor, and it's going in that office that was the, where Janet was, is, yeah.
And then if there's anything that's kind of outdoor material or whatever, we can at least temporarily store it in the bank or whatever until we make a determination when that building's coming down, if there's...
Do you have some stuff over there? You do?
Yeah, stuff on the first floor.
I do have an occupying kind of two and a half rooms on the first floor.
On the first floor.
The one thing I'll, I just wanna throw out here, like, hear your conversations about the mill and everything, you've gotta think about some security here, because if we have to respond to an issue, for example, if you have, you have people that come into the Town Hall now and get irate with the tax collector, they get irate with friends of that nature, we have two accesses to get to that third floor. An elevator, which is out of the question, or a stairwell. So our response is not going, is going to be hammered to get there, and to provide any, any kind of assistance that we can do. And depending on the intent, or what, what the issue is, I mean, there's been shootings in Town Hall. You can defend the stairwell very easily, and you're going to prevent us from getting it, because an elevator is suicide, so is a stairway. So you've gotta think on a security basis, too, where you think your most prone people are to threats and violence, and the accessibility of law enforcement has to be there. Now, whether it's a secondary stairwell that the public doesn't use as an access in, or a different means of access for us to be, you know, to get there. I mean, currently, I mean, what do we have, we have three stairs or a side door, and we're there, we are inside.
And worst case, an area where they are now, you can go through a window. You could go through the window in Gene's office, or wherever, I mean, if, you could breach anything.
We could breach the Town Hall very easily.
Yeah.
The mill is gonna be a different story. You know, gaining, gaining two or three flights of stairs, or, you know, to get somewhere in a shooting mall is not...
Because you're not gonna use the elevator, obviously, no.
You're not gonna use the elevator. So you are gonna have to access that building by foot, and by foot means you're going up a narrow stairway with nowhere to hide, with potentially an armed, an armed individual on that foot. So getting there and providing me the assistance is going to be very, very difficult. And we're not set up because, I mean, we don't have shields and things of that nature to, to advance in the hallway, even though they're four or five thousand bucks a piece. So it's just one of those things that, it's something you need to think about, where your most vulnerable are going to be, and try to do it by the safety, whether it's getting out of there, getting to move to a more protected area, and allowing us the access to get there. I mean, God forbid anything happens, but you've gotta have some kind of thought process and be somewhat prepared should that happen. I mean, society has changed a lot, people are on edges, a lot of things going on, you know, we have to think that way.
One of the things that Steve had looked at in his plan was potentially that that front stairwell was locked to the, closed to the public, electronically locked, so that the only way you're accessing it would be with a, with a pass like you have similar to the PD right now.
The other thing that I worry about is, is I've been in the mill before, when the elevator has stopped, all right? And that can happen anywhere, all right? And the last time was, it wasn't working, I mean, I just used the stairs, but they had three, four people in the senior center, they had to call the fire department, and the guys had to come and take them down the stairs. And so I guess, obviously, if you're putting the public, and we've seen how many people come in to Town Hall from the public that are in that building at one time, and now you're putting maybe those people up on the third floor, and you've got somebody with a cane, somebody with this or that, that's a little scary, too, I guess. I mean, I can run down the stairs, but I think if I was in a wheelchair, or had a cane, I think I'd be a little wigged out with the fact that I couldn't get out of there, or, you know.
Regardless of taking the mill over, I mean, it's going to increase the preparedness of us. We are going to have to look at different options on how we would actually get in there, and what we could do once we were inside.
Cause the other, I guess, and you tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, not, I mean, granted, people get agitated at the moment, but a typical person that's going to go into a building to cause harm, they're gonna be, they're already gonna know what they're dealing with, and how, how they can lock you out. Is that correct?
No, that is true. That's very true. In situations like that, they're anticipating the response.
Yeah.
So they've already made a determination of what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. And by limiting, obviously, limiting the access points, it makes it very easy for them.
Yeah.
It makes it more difficult for us.
Yeah.
And obviously, in instances like that, time, time is...
Is everything, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's important that we get there, and we've changed tactics now with the schools, and we now have access to those schools. We never did, aside from the window.
Yeah.
So now, now things are different, and it's just things that we have to think about going forward here, because once you make this move, and once you make that, you know, that initial investment, it's gonna be there for a long time, actually, so you have to think, okay...
Ahead, before we make...
Before you, before you make those decisions, that's all. I just have to look at, obviously, the safety side of things, and should we have to come in?
You know, talking about emergencies, thinking about this construction when they tear this down, there's gonna be a lot of big equipment, trucks. Are you gonna be, you're gonna change your entrance, or...
We're probably gonna come in from the backside.
Come in from the backside, 'cause...
And at some point, I've already, I've already done the analysis of everything with the machinery, and obviously the drainage and all this stuff. There's gonna be a, most of it, we're gonna be walking in here. We're gonna be parking somewhere else and walking.
'Cause I know there's gonna be a lot of big trucks and cranes, and, I mean, it's gonna interrupt the job.
Amazing, amazing decisions now, where to book people.
Speaking of flooding.
Sorry, Mike, but we're washing the building now.
I look out the building.
One opens it up, one watches them, one's holding the truck so the wind don't blow away.
But you've already got it, you've already put some thought into that.
Oh, I certainly have, I mean, I would say most of, during, during the highlight of the, of the actual build, I mean, it's gonna be foot traffic in and out of our building. We'll be booking remotely, and other PDs will be using their facilities.
Can you open that rear gate and go out that way?
And we can go in and out that way, but I, I have a feeling that they're gonna have to put piping and piles of material.
Yeah, materials, yeah.
So they're gonna need to probably use some of that parking area over there to transfer over here.
So it's gonna create a hardship for a while.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to minimize as much as I can as far as interference for whoever's doing this, so we're trying to make changes.
That's where it's so important that your construction management company be on board and be so...
They would be the ones that...
Yeah, they're the ones that are gonna have to, that's, that's gonna have to be there, that's exactly right.
And depending, you know, one of the things that I would approach you guys on would be the parking area across the street here, that some of the employees in the Town Hall use, maybe dedicating that to some of our petroleum and so on.
And then they can use the bank, they'll have to use the bank.
You know, obviously, it's, it's going to be disruptive, it's going to be, you know, I told my people, I mean, you're not gonna be happy, you're gonna get dusty, your cars are gonna, you know, I mean, things are gonna happen. You know, it's like anything else, you redo a road, it's, it's complaint, 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 and then all of a sudden, it's all done, and it's like, oh, this is lost.
Yeah, you gotta make a mess before you can, yeah.
I'm just trying to put those plans ahead and...
And prepare them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We won't, we won't, you won't get a demerit for dusty cruisers during construction. That's for sure. Awesome. All right, so we'll move ahead with that, all right?
Getting those set up, I'll get you the plan, the last plan that Steve had done, so that you have that. And that was for all four floors. I mean, obviously, if we're gonna use that building, the safety aspect is gonna have to be addressed no matter where you are, because even the fourth floor meeting space, you're gonna have the same problem. We can't put everything on one floor, it just will not fit.
The only difference with the fourth floor meeting space is that's timed, it's not every single day, it's certain times, and, again, if, if...
And if it's controversial...
Then we're gonna, well...
You know somebody that...
Right.
You know what I mean?
That's what I was just gonna say, we may have to start, which is probably, a lot of places already do that. You know, they have their selectmen's meeting, and there is an officer there, you know, no different than when we had the recount, we had an officer here, you know, we may have to end up doing that, so. That will be just life. There's a lot of things that are gonna change, unfortunately. Any other old business, Gene?
No.
No?
I don't have anything. I don't know if you would like me to unmute everyone, so that if there are any questions...
If there's any, if any, yeah, you can, if anyone has any questions.
They're all unmuted, I don't know if anyone has anything they would like to request, ask.
We just, we need the location of the shed, the exact location of the...
Darryl's on, Darryl's on the phone. Did anyone have any questions or anything that they needed? No, 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 it appears not. It appears you're, it appears you're good.
We're good to go.
Um, we are going to go into non-public.
Okay, very good. So you are going to move into a non-public session under RSA 91 dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, little letter B.
All right, roll call.
Sunny Patton.
Ruth Mooney.
John Pike.
I have to end the other meeting as well.
Yep, no problem. We will sit and hold off just a minute.
Are you in this one or out of this one?
No, you're out of this one. You're excused, you are excused. Thank you very much.
See you, guys.
See you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.